I would like to ask you, Mr. Shoroure, what is your vision?
Thank you. Let me use this opportunity to thank our brothers and sisters, our compatriots, who have taken out time today to come to see one of your own. One of the organizers who have made it possible for me to arrive from Nigeria just yesterday via a red eye. Actually, left the night day before arrived Nigeria yesterday and came to Canada just after a few hours. It has become necessary to call myself one of you because just like many of you, I've been around in North America for 19 years. And guess what? When I came here in 1999, this instructive, because it will be 20 years in 2019 that I've been in America and I'm heading back home as president of the Federation. But when I saw somebody, 1999, who told me he's been in America for 10 years, I thought it was crazy. I was like, what are you doing here, 10 years? Then I was fresh in town. I had no idea that the reason people are here. It's not because there's so much love here out here, but a lot of people really want to give back, they want to go back home. But the objective conditions for returning back to Nigeria is just near, it's not there. And it's the same thing that happened to me. I came, I went to school, started a business, Sahar Reporters, and tried to go back home. Home is just not for you after a while. And then I wonder what people at home are going through. If those of us who can afford to, you know, send money home, pay our bills and, you know, buy nice clothing when we go home, some of us own houses, cars over there. If we cannot live there, then it means that Nigeria has become truly an illegal place on earth. And I'm using that to define my vision and my mission in going to Nigeria. I am not new to the Nigerian landscape. I have been an activist in Nigeria since 1989. So also by 2019, I would have been an activist fighting for a better Nigeria for 30 years. I'm 47. I started doing this since I was about 17 years old, fighting to create a country that is just fair and liberal. So my vision is simple and is defined by why most of you are sitting down here today. I am sick and tired of a Nigeria that doesn't work and I know could actually work for the Nigerian people. I'm sick and tired of leaders who don't know their left from their right. I'm sick and tired of a country that is flowing in make and honey, but its people are living in penury and abject poverty. So my mission is to go there. Not I, I want to emphasize the word "I", I want us, good people of Nigeria, to head back to Nigeria to rescue the country. And what I found out in the last few weeks that I've done this is that we are not the only ones who feel that Nigeria should be rescued. I did a social experiment on every thought. What most of you don't like to do. I packed my things and traveled to Nigeria as part of this decision to travel to the remotest part of Nigeria to test out whether Nigerians are united in bringing an end to their misery. And when I got to the airport, I was received massively by your people. Massively. We have all the information online, you can see if there are some of them alive. When we were done with reception at the airport, we took a trip to Ibadan, as a starting point, called a town hall meeting like this, the place was filled up. A thousand people were sitting inside the hall, another thousand outside couldn't even gain entrance into the hall. All of them are saying, look, the time is now to take this country back from these people. So, well, as you know, Nigerians are a little cynical. They say, well, this is southwest agenda, you know, it's because you are Eurobama. Try not. So we headed to Abuja at a town hall meeting, the place was also packed. What was the question we're getting? How soon can we get it done? So we left the place and went to Kano. Kano is supposedly the stronghold of Mr. Abuhari or Pahar Abuhari, as a lot of call in Nigeria. We went to Kano, citizen, met poor people who are saying they want a future for their children. They don't, they don't think this is working for them anymore. Came back to Kaduna. Women formed 80% of the town hall meeting. Women in order on one side and Christians from southern Kaduna. And the message we left to them and they applauded was that they no longer want a southern or northern Kaduna, they want a happy Kaduna. And they discovered that the current political system can no longer deliver out to them a kind of future that they think their children can, in which your children can flourish. One of the things I heard from that I'll never forget is that each time we met all these people, including tracing some of them back to Lagos, Nagege, Wela and Begas, they kept asking that they want to send their children to school. They said, you know, we want Makaranta, which is half-selling for schooling. And I was surprised because up until then, we'd be made to believe that Noughtanas don't like to go to school. That is why Boko Haram is flourishing. So we met someone who broke it down to us, an amazing, interesting Sheikh Gumi. And he broke it down and said, do you know why Abuhari gets 12 million votes in the Nuts every election cycle? He said, because there are people they call Talakawas in the Nuts. And they've always been looking for someone who can take them out of poverty. It's been their lifelong dream. And they thought Abuhari would do it. You know what they call Abuhari? He did not make us care, the man of the truth. But they discovered that he's not better than the others who have come before him, who have fooled them and taken them for a ride. That was why we were accepted to come in, you know. Otherwise, even the former governor of Kano still cannot enter Kano to campaign. We were there, we were doing radio shows, we were mingling with people. We went to the Emir Palace and spoke to the Emir. All these things you can find online. So after leaving the place, we headed to the southeast, where of course we know there's a lot of agitation for Biafra right now. Again, what we saw there, I can just put it this way, a lot of Nigerians have succeeded mentally from Nigeria. Yes, it's not only Igbo's, Eurobamas, Housas. They no longer see Nigeria as a place that can accommodate their aspirations for progress and prosperity. So, but it was amazing that we had all these people accepting the message we brought, which was that we can take the country back and rebuild it and make it a progressive and prosperous state that can cater for his own people. And they asked us to define it. But we found out that a lot of Nigerians don't actually want too much. They just want simple things, you know, integration, you arrive from one place to the other. Nobody asks us for water. They know that government is probably not going to provide. They already provided water for themselves through water holes in their comfort. Everybody is running a local government, by the way, in Nigeria. And, but they want schools, they want hospitals, they want, you know, be able to do business and get a small drone to cater for their immediate needs. You know, the pensioners who have worked, they want to be paid their pensions. Workers want to be paid salaries on time, not six months after they have, they have been there. But all of this, as you all know, is nothing, is nothing new to us. We all know the problems, as you have said. The thing is, how do we find a solution to this? And the solution is right there in our presence, it's close to us. The solution is to mobilize Nigerians across the world to go after these people and take them out. This same period that we are in now, India was in that situation a few years ago. They brought back all the nurses, doctors, computer experts, whatever it took to bring them back to India. They invested in it, provided them gated communities, replicated at least some measure of the lifestyles that they used to hear. And the reason why Nigeria is spending $2 billion in medical tourism in India today to help fill the two persons that are sick in Nigeria that can afford it is in India. Because India made the investment to bring back their diaspora to help in rebuilding their country. No one, and I mean it, it's very rare that I hear from anyone who was asking my ethnicity or my religion. So the religious argument has also, you know, gone through its full circle and failed. The ethnic circle has gone through full circle and failed. People are now looking for persons of character to take Nigeria to the next level. So Nigeria has seen the transition of power, rotation of presidency, at least in three regions now. We've seen it go to southwest since 1999, eight years. It went to the Nuts again for a few months, it went to south-south for five years. Each of the presidents that have been in power since 1999, none of them could construct a highway from the closest city to their village. They wanted to do themselves a favor, no. None of them brought about water or hospital to their village, to their people. So the people in the southeast who thought Jonathan would help them, found out after he left power that he had no intention of constructing a second Nigeria bridge. The best he did was to commission a photograph of the bridge, what the bridge will be in the future. Now, so people have come to understand that it's easy to fool them using ethnicity, your religion, and what you say, these tokens that they give them in terms of money and inflation there.
Thank you, Mr. Shoroure. We are glad you're here in Canada.
President.
Former president.
My first question to you, sir, is about how are you going to work with this kaba, this old analog that fooled this senator, House of Assembly, that they have been there for decades? How are you going to deal with it? The second question, believing the religious leader, the churches, let's say religious leader, the failed Nigeria, how are you going to deal with it? Thank you so much.
Okay, my name is Tunde Alaa Faseh. I am not Shoroure back in my early life days and I still see him as the same person. So I am very happy to support the Take Him Up movement and I'm putting everything I have to be part of that platform. But something that I still find missing in the whole engagement is the fact that I haven't seen any plan to engage people at a grassroots level, one. And I'm saying this because if you're going to fight at the presidential level, the people, we want to see the councilors who will be working with you, the House of Red, the senators, the House of Assembly people. We want to know who they have because we know some of your ideology, but we don't know the antecedent of these people that will be working with you to actualize this agenda. Thank you.
Let's go ahead, sir.
So your first question relates to fighting kaba. And that's one area where I have a degree in fighting kaba. And Tunde, who just spoke, attended the University of Lagos with me. We used to have a problem of a small kaba on campus. There were gang members, we called them the university cult. Cultism in the university. And at the time, our campus was overwhelmed by these guys. They were just doing what they liked, you know, raid cases, extortion became an order on campus. And we found out that they couldn't touch them because they were children of the political kaba on the outside. So at the point, we had to fight against them and liberate our campus from them, gangs. When I left the university, I had been expelled twice. I've been arrested 80 different times. So, and went on from there in 1999 to come to the US. After I was done with my master's degree, I set up Sahar Reporters, which most of you know, it's 12 years old now. And we went out against the kaba again. And one of the things we did with Sahar Reporters was to eliminate a Mogabe agenda by Basenjo through the tort time. We helped to make that fail. There was a kaba that used to be known as the Yaradua Kaba, who, which was led by his wife. My Yaradua was brain dead in Saudi Arabia. And they didn't want a peaceful transfer of constitutional power to the vice president at that time. Good luck, Jonathan. We fought that kaba by exposing the fact that the man they claim was recovering was actually brain dead. And that led to the ascension of power by Jonathan. So when Jonathan became, well, I don't want to use the word useless in front of you, but that was what came to happen. And created his own kaba, led by, you know, the Ziani and others. We had to fight that kaba. This involves the Ziani, his wife, patients. And all of us went through that disappointment we had that the first thing with the PhD came to power in Nigeria as minority. The German, the Nazi, performed on us for five years, they were just standing left, right and center. So a kaba led by his wife and the Minister of Agriculture, we forced that kaba to the point that they lost the election. I'll tell you what they told me in February 2015, when they postponed the election by two weeks. They told me, it's kaba people said, why are you burdening yourself, Shoroure? There's no way with the kind of money we have, we can lose this election. And that answered a question about somebody asking that they already have the money. Jonathan is an example of how money cannot work when people are determined that you lose. Most people that were against Jonathan in 2015 were not for Abuhari. It was very clear about this. But they would support even a goat to take over from Jonathan in 2015. There used to be another grand party that we called anything but Jonathan, it's called ABJ. That was the prevailing reason at that time. Not because they thought Abuhari would come up, but that's just to shame and expel from Nigeria the virus that Jonathan had. And they spent money. They were carrying dollars all over the place to traditional, they bribed anything bribable, if there's a word like that. But they still lost the election. The country is lacking in heroes. The churches are not different, the mosques are not different. Even the traditional worship places are not different, right? So it's not only the churches, it's just everything about Nigeria at this time is wrong, right? Even the churches are starting to lie. Yesterday, probably you've seen some things that are saying that Deep Alai built a hospital. And it was false. It's false, there's no hospital anywhere with such facilities, no one. We just investigated and came back about it.
Cathedral.
Yeah, it was a cathedral, the church is not a hospital. But they didn't even stop the lie until we found out that. So churches have become, you know, you know, there's church leaders, they're riding around in private jets and they don't care about us, they don't care about anybody. Nigeria was hijacked by its greedy people. And you can never satisfy greed, it's not possible. If you give all the resources in Canada to greedy people, five of them in Nigeria will wipe it. If you put Nigerian leaders in this Toronto, you will not recognize Toronto in six months. So it doesn't matter churches, just grassroots, I won't address that quickly. The team they call grassroots politicking in Nigeria is the policies that you are condemning. When they say, go and make the grassroots, the grassroots are the people who collect salt, rice and cara and grinding machine and wheelbarrow from it. That's the meaning of grassroots politicking. And when you see that, someone tells you that a grassroots politician is the person who come and carry back the rice from the house of the politician to go and distribute. Is the one who comes back and gets guns and knives to go and enforce anybody that collected the rice from them, if they don't vote for them, you know, they'll kill the person. That's what grassroots politicking means. What we are trying to do is to disrupt this whole political process. And when you say disrupt, it's actually a technical term for bypassing old and ragged and discredited and decrepit political systems. And we have succeeded at it, we have, because we are young people who could have done it. But you see, it is a market leader that politicians vote to. You just give them, we want 3,000 votes, they will go and bring the 3,000 votes, whether it is writ or not, they don't care. They call the leaders of the transport unions, boats, bikes and taxis. They give them money, give them guns, machetes, they say we want 3,000 votes. That's what they call grassroots politicking in Nigeria.
How do you intend to diversify the economy from power-based to tourism, agriculture and the likes? Second one is, why don't we have a policy to reduce cost of green business in Nigeria? In the short term, as against the minimum weight of about 400% increase, which could come in the back?
Nigeria has the most expensive telecommunications infrastructure and they make good money, crazy money, but they have to work service. When we're in Norway, we couldn't translate on Facebook because infrastructures are not there, nobody is protecting the interests of Nigerians. Across Nigeria right now, people are dying of diseases that don't kill anywhere else anymore. And it's because our health system is completely broken down. Situation where now we have, that we have now is that the moment you go to hospital, doctors don't even check what is wrong with you. They just pronounce that you have malaria automatically. And when the malaria doesn't go away, they will upgrade it to typhoid automatically after six days. And when you come back with typhoid after six days, they just refer you to a pastor. You know, like you better come and say pastor because I think your people are not pursuing you. This is our health system in a nutshell. It might sound funny, but that is where the churches are waiting in the wings, you know, for doctors to refer people that you would have treated to them. And what the leaders of the churches in our country are doing, when they are sick, they don't go to, they travel abroad to take care of them. That's where they are very healthy, that's why they live long. For the church members, they just give them Mankashi, you know, anointing oil and things like that. I don't know, that way to religion is a complex issue in Nigeria, but this is true. The thing about restructuring that I've seen in Nigeria is that it's driven by the same old people. They're the ones who want to restructure Nigeria. But if you look at their history, they restructure Nigeria into their pocket. How do you expect them to now restructure it for you when they are 80 years old? You know, you can name them, you know them all over the place. So these are things that will be priority, is to quell the whole carnage that Nigeria has become, right? At the minimum, for those of you who are coming from, you know, the diaspora, we want the airport toilets to work. There are four of them in Lagos. You can imagine that Nigeria cannot maintain four toilets as its international airport. If you are waiting for your bag, you can't, you know, you'll be out of breath because there's no air conditioning in the luggage area. I cannot understand it, you know, and I'm never going to accept that. If you don't have security, forget about tourism, you are wasting your time. If Nigeria is not secure, there's nobody who's going to travel there. I tell it to those of you who are here, you know the truth in our houses. If you want to scare your children and to do something for, just tell them you are taking them to Nigeria. Anything you ask them to do, they will do it for you. Daddy, please don't take me to Nigeria, what do you want me to do? If they say go and sweep, they will sweep. If they say go and watch plays, they will watch. Because Nigeria is the only country that diasporans used to scare their children. Look, there's no child who's been to Nigeria before, which is that I want to go back another time. But tell the same children that you are taking them to Jamaica, they will just be saying, daddy, when are we leaving? But say, let's go to Nigeria. Because there's nothing in Nigeria that is encouraging to these kids and is a way to describe it. So for us to have tourism as a major industry that can bring in foreign currencies, as we call it, or investment, we have to fix our power sector, we have to fix our security sector, we have to fix infrastructure in that country. There's no point to think about tourism when you can't even get to the tourist centers from the airport. You know, if you, if you have been to any tourism, if you know of any tourist center in Nigeria, the question is, how do you get there? So I don't want to engage in this conversation about tourism without first solving the problem of infrastructure, security and power. Because if this was Nigeria, since we started this conversation, we probably have seen light out twice already.
Nepal.
Nepal, we have to say, the off-nepal team, you are doing a story. Cost of doing business, now is just the thing I say about Nigeria has been run by people with analog brains, whereas we are in digital era. But what is, what are the things that drive up the cost of business? They are the same things I talked about, you know, security, power, infrastructure, of course corruption. And the economy can't work when each time you go to register a company, instead of you doing it in two hours, somebody will delay for four weeks or four months because you have not paid an official a bribe. You all know what you go through at the airport. You cannot come in without somebody harassing for what you bring for us. When you are leaving, even if they come with a mussy that you are talking to, they will seize it. They'll seize your dry fish, seize your food because you wouldn't bribe them. Until you resolve those issues, some of you must have seen on Facebook, I did something each time I'm leaving Nigeria, I didn't do it in this last week because they know me very well now. If I'm leaving the airport, I will record the officials as they are demanding for bribe and put it on YouTube. So, but they know me now, but they still do it. You have to clean up that assets, you have to clean up a lot of things. And all this, someone who's gotten the understanding of how things work, I mean, I'm talking about exposure now, can do that. And who is also confronted a kaba that behind why things don't work? And we are the only ones that can do it. And I see and ask and always say to people, if only Nigeria can work like Ghana, 30% of us will be heading back home the next year. I'm sure we're tired of this place, I know what you are going through. And I know that the Western Union life you live is not what you chose to do. But so many of you came here thinking you spent two, two weeks, it's become 20 years now. Now you say, I have no idea when you are heading back home. That's our reality, you are not an outsider that talk, you know, we can tell ourselves the truth now. So, but I'm sure you want to go back home. But so many of you are also struggling. You are making the investment at home to create some small business, to do this, but you know the frustration. I give my example, I give my own personal example. Last year, I went and set up Sahar Reporters. Before then, Sahar Reporters had been in existence for 12 years in the US. I was sued several times, four times, but no judge ever gave a judgment to me that they should shut down Sahar Reporters. I won all the cases in the US. The moment I entered Nigeria, launched Sahar Reporters Foundation with Shoyin Khan, Attentin, Family Father and all those cool people, I got attacked physically. I got protests in front of the office, like people sponsored by people in government. The Senate President went out in a judgment in Ilani, that is real estate, they call Pahar. And they froze all my accounts. Within three months that I arrived Nigeria with Sahar Reporters, the entire business had been taken over. So you imagine what Nigerians are going through. You have all these ideas, you walk into the place, they will just steal the idea or they steal it from you. But those who are smart, quote unquote, are those diasporans who have played the game and they come back, you know them around the Canada. They come back and they are, before you were somebody who was driving taxi before we driving Rolls Royce. Yeah, because they've gone home and played the game according to the way it's played. How do they do it? They have them launder money. I heard Toronto is a place where there's a lot of money laundering for politicians. Yes, so you can, the rest of Shoroure, I want to become president, you will hear from me. I thank you so much for just energizing the room with those definitive statements. I want to address that of Adan Tshomole because I've never had to speak about Adan Tshomole before publicly. But when I heard that Nigerians were forming Adan Tshomole when he became Labour leader, I questioned a lot of people. Something you should know about Adan Tshomole is that he was the only Labour leader, and this is why you should be having your suspicion, who was not arrested under the military. No one did detention. Because, yes, and he lived in Abuja, he didn't go on exile. That means he was very cozy with people in power, on that military road. So when you have people like that, you should understand their feeling. Even me, as small as I was, student union leader at the University of Lagos, there's a young person here, they used to arrest, and detention was my revolving door. They bring me back, I've been on the next day, they try to get me arrested. I've been to prison everywhere in Nigeria, across Nigeria. Adan Tshomole, you cannot find anywhere that Adan was arrested under the bank leader, under Apacha. So that should tell you the kind of person Adan has always been. In my own case, I have always, always been like this. I know, the only person can declare his assets to pay. I know, I, the only person can declare his assets today if you want it. I have a house, a mortgage in Nigeria, I have one house in my village. I have maybe two, three used cars in Nigeria, that's all I have. My bank account, I can ensure that I send it to you every time they want. Probably today it has ninety-seven dollars. Because I'm spending a lot of money on this, like, I'm getting a lot of support from Nigerians who are donating through GoFundMe so I can help. But we're using that money to reach out to more Nigerians. But Adama Shomole has always been like this. The place to find Adama under military rule when I first met him in person, he was at the party. You know, they were the laws will do very well, some of you know about, you know. I don't want to say that for me here. It's so, and I was like, how could a Labour leader be so free and be partying in Abuja when none of us were hiding? Adama Shomole was in Abuja, he was also part of the people that are backed and selected to be part of his constitutional conference. If they don't trust you in those days, they would never have let you be in the constitutional conference. So, he has always been a friend of people in power. And even under Asunjo, what I heard he used to do will be to call a strike. Meet with Asunjo first and they will increase square price to, say, one seventy. But what they want, I generally want to do is one forty. So, he then go and meet the call of Asunjo, they will strike for two days, then they will reduce, everybody will be clapping for him. And that's how he became a low state government, by fully breaking through all those borders. My life has been perfect, you know, you know what I do, the Harry Porters for twelve years. And there's pretty much, there's nobody within Nigeria that I did not fight. To the extent that I'm happy to introduce myself as a call of duty offender of the party in Nigeria. So, we mentioned security. Yes, we would like to strengthen our security, but it's also important to understand that Nigeria has no security. You know, sometimes when you are being accompanied by policemen, it's actually better to just carry a, I mean, a moustache with you or kidnappers. Those more that just know you, that they are not kidnapping you. But police is the kind of people that will tell kidnappers that beat us at the social place, that will make us go there. And that's Nigeria for you. So, but I believe that if the people can buy into your agenda, they will protect you. We had a minor issue when we were in Canada. As we were living in the Emias Palace, they went to hire some, they called them Amajiri. You know, how to give them posters quickly, we don't watch over it, and things like that, you know. But you know they are hired because they put the posters upside down. We quickly went there and distributed our posters, they didn't know the difference and we left. Because within that period, the confusion started because they knew what they were doing. So, but they were afraid of us, even though we're their territory. They were afraid, they were afraid, none of the guns we were carrying. But the power of the ideas we have come to spread and not. You say, you know, there's a whole lot of hope. I have hope, not just in myself, I have hope in you. I have hope in everybody in this room that are sitting here, when you should have been at an Ohambe, partying away on Saturday afternoon. Yes, look, this safe city that you have me sitting down discussing the future, it used to be where some of the governors of Nigeria would come and people would go and buy table to listen to, even though they know their tips. But that era is gone. That's why there's a change that, you know, that's why we have you sitting here, waiting for hours to listen to these new ideas we're spreading. The point I'm making is that there's no point allocating any titles to someone that say he's a savior. Anybody could have done what I'm doing here in this crowd.
Yes, Toby, yes. So, I confirmed to you story earlier about people fighting called guys back in those days. Yes, that could happen. I witnessed it. This guy raised his mic. My question ties around the judiciary system in Nigeria. We all live in Canada and the US here, and we know you don't joke with the judiciary system here. Most of these looters and leaders in Nigeria are working about freely because our judiciary system is just corrupt.
Yes.
What do you plan to do differently about that?
So, you mentioned the US and Canada and how the judiciary is work. And something that I have seen in judiciary here is that when judges are corrupt, you don't make them the chief justice of the US, if there's any evidence. The police will treat a judge as a common criminal, as they will treat a common criminal if they are found wanting. But in Nigeria, all the judges that, there was a panes set up, I think it was under, I don't, I don't remember the particular government, but it was headed by Justice Ashok late. And they knew all the judges that were involved in corruption and asked for Nigeria to have a progressive, fearless, fair and just judicial system. They should remove all those judges. Nobody touched any one of them. So, we've gotten to the point now where judges are exchanging judgments over text messages. Yes, if a senior lawyer, all these people, they call senior advocates of Nigeria, only a few of them can win a case without meeting the judge. They have back channels through which they meet these judges. They, there's a lot of cases, some of them reported by us of when judges will be given money by lawyers. The one that stand out in my mind the most is one just judge of, I think his name is Fishin Ababo, the judge of Nigerian Industrial Court. A lawyer was giving him money. He will collect, he will ask for so much money from the lawyer. When his mother died, he went to the lawyer, gave him money for his wife, his mother. When the brother-in-law died, gave him money for the brother-in-law. When the wife sister died, gave. So, when he asks the lawyer one more time, say please, I need money, the lawyer not gave him so much money. He not said, but I only asked for two fifty thousand, you give me seven hundred thousand. The lawyer said, it is to cover any one of your relatives that are dying. Just take it in advance.
Alright. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Alright, the next question is gonna be, oh wow, it's gonna be, it'll be, Bostade, are you here? Okay, please, go to the other microphone. Can you, your question is here. Victor O'Feymon, okay, you can come this side. And finally, Toby Edu. Toby, are you here? You can come this side. Okay, please, ask your questions directly. Go ahead.
Hi, um, good afternoon to you. My first question is, how do you intend to bring change to the educational system in Nigeria? Considering the, the fact that our youth no longer, they've been going to school, inside they will make, install a quick money. So, how do you, how do you want to bring the change?
My name is Victor O'Feymon. I also happen to attend the University of Lagos.
University of Kars.
Yeah, um, my personal is, every year, Nigeria's diaspora contributes about twenty-two billion to Nigerian GDP.
Thirty-five billion is what it is.
And even so, the franchise of Nigeria in diaspora is taken away by part of the social in Nigeria. How do you intend to? By ensuring that they don't have the right to vote in whatever they are assigned in Nigeria. So, if voted into power, how soon can you ensure that Nigerians in diaspora have?
Right to vote.
My name is Toby Edu, I'm outgoing president of the Nigerian Students Association at EFT.
Toby, Toby worked so hard, he was supposed to stop at the university yesterday, but their flight came in very late. But Toby had worked so hard to organize the students and they were waiting, but when the flight was canceled, it was late.
Air Canada, like Eric.
Um, so my question is related to diaspora. So, how would you encourage diaspora students and professionals to be more involved in the job in Nigeria? And I just want to know more about your story. What was your motivation for to go back? And what impact do you want to leave behind when you serve as president?
I want to start with the one about the educational system, just to correct the impression that it's not as if Nigerians don't want to go to school. In fact, the records we have is that more people want to go to school than Nigeria has provided them educational opportunities for. There are about, I think, you know, I may not be completely correct or accurate, because it's very fine, it's very hard to find accurate figures from Nigeria. But about five million students who write with the National Examination and Transportation University, what is called CHAMP, Joint Admission and Exploration Board exams, every year. And Nigeria is only able to provide, I think, space for five thousand. So, you have these young people aspiring to go to school. And I mentioned to you that even if they're not, where we think, people don't want to go to school. Women there are saying they want to send their children to school. But here is the problem, nobody is making investment in education. Zanfara, this year, when we had, I think, twenty-seven students writing, writing WAEK, the whole of Zanfara State. But the governor of Zanfara has a two hundred and fifty thousand, I think it's about, almost a million dollar house in Beneland. They spend, they spend money on pre-Grimage every year, billions, to send people to go and visit Mecca and back. Some other system for people to go and visit Israel and back. The investment in education is not there. We don't have investment in teachers, we don't train teachers anymore. We just allow the education system to be on autopilot. And you are left with students who are fending for themselves. We just had a brother here come up and said that he was the outgoing president of Nigerian students in the area, one of these colleges here. You find Nigerian students who are coming directly from Nigeria, competing everywhere in the world with the limited resources they've had, limited education they've had. The moment they are given the opportunity, you will be surprised at how well they can compete. And in the US, apart from Indians, Nigerians are the most educated immigrants. So, we just have to make a deliberate investment in education and invest in new school buildings or fixing the ones that are there. I want to create, for example, community colleges in all the local governments so that people who don't want to go to university or who can't go to university can have an associate degree. That can help them power their local government as class, you know, as advisors, or accountants, or bookkeepers. We don't, we have to deliberately invest in education. I was telling somebody in the way here that we no longer need libraries with books, we need notebooks with libraries. So, how do we get into the hands of our kids? I'm sure your kids go to school here. By the time they're in the second year, told that they're introducing them on how to use computers, our professor, our university professors in our universities, some of them don't have, know how to open email addresses. Right? This is true. And you expect them to create or educate the next generation of students, you are wasting your time. But good news is that, I, my father died as a teacher. As part of, I also moonlight as a teacher, I've been teaching for ten years in the US as an associate professor. I mean, I joined professor of post-Coast Africa history. One of the things that they told me outrightly from the world is you cannot have more than fourteen students in your classroom. It doesn't matter how many people are interested. Because that matters, that without the classroom size being broken up, you cannot teach people. When you go to the University of Lagos, where I graduated from, it's a shame. You can't find a toilet you can use most likely anywhere, except maybe the vice chancellor's office or the registrar. And you can't, you find classrooms where students are sitting on the ground to learn. Just, we have to make those investments, deliberate investment in education. And that means that monies that we are wasting on senators that are adding low value to our country can be invested in education so that buildings can spring up, infrastructure can, technology can play a major role in our education system. It's not everybody that should be in the classroom. There should be a way, a country that has five million people who are looking for admission, to also do online courses that are legitimate. So many of you are doing it here. There are people who are obtaining degrees here without touching the university walls, right? And the same thing can happen in Nigeria. A lot of Nigerians are obtaining certification online. So, why is that we can't have a way to diversify how we train? But again, it boils down to leadership. You cannot have analog thinking leaders running a digital society. The diaspora of Nigeria is the biggest investor, foreign investor in Nigeria today. You see, they'll tell you that you will get a five billion, but this is what my experience is. I've been lived here for nineteen years. When you want to send real money, you don't send it through Western Union. You'll go to the airport to look for a friend you can trust. When you are sending anything more than three thousand, ten thousand, when you're going to trip ten thousand, you look for somewhere to take it. So, if you calculate the help me take it home investment, you are talking about fifty billion dollars easily. Because there are people who send fifty thousand, I mean fifty thousand dollars to the, or they carry the money down themselves. Because the moment you go to Western Union twice, within a month, you're sending money to three thousand, they're asking you questions. And it's your money. Because they don't want money to flow out of here. You can work all you want. America, Canada don't want your money to leave this place, they want to keep it here. So, it's the reason why we must play, place priority attention to the diaspora. So that not only do we continue to give, get from them, but we offer them the protection they desire to be able to cooperate openly and safely in Nigeria. And who better can do it than one of you, you know? I don't want some people who are listening to us to say that, you know, the old man posed in the diaspora. That's not the agenda. Diaspora students, you ask question about students, how can we incentivize them to come home? Same thing, we have to make Nigeria a everyone safe space to go to. I'm sure if you are asked, where would you like to do your study leave between Ghana and Nigeria, where would you go?
Actually, I am motivated to go back to Nigeria to do.
Motivation is not enough, I'm saying it's a direct question. If you are to ask to go to Ghana to do study abroad and Nigeria, most people will go to Ghana. Because you know that you are likely to be safe there and you have electricity. But where would you want to go? Nigeria. But then you gotta walk, you gotta worry about kidnappers just picking you up between the airport and your first destination. It's not almost always true, but that is some of the realities we face.
Alright, thank you very much. Put your eyes together for your show. I'll be calling on Ademola Ibesame and Adetjare and Baba Tunde Yusuf. If all of you are here, could you please step forward? Um, okay. Who's ready? So, please, you will answer the question directly.
Thank you very much. I'm saying, my name is Adetjare. I also, also graduated from the University of Lagos and I was a student in college. Uh, my first question is this.
Great lives and lionesses. Great lives and lionesses. Okay, this is you and I, just in case you guys are pushing.
Aside from that, I also graduated from Semeca College and the current, the last president, if you know president, I was a supporter, a strong supporter of her, she's white and she can never forgive me to her. Okay, my question goes, my first question is this. What are your strategy in this to penetrate the grassroots? Because I know the grassroots very key and you'll be going everywhere, but at the same time be team. I just wanted to elaborate on that. And the second question is, how we bad activate? The last time I remember, I was in a place where Dino was talking and before he was elected as the senator. And he mentioned a lot of things about that, but when he became senator, it's a different story. And the mindset of people in Nigerians all over the world is, all these activists, including Shomole, when they get to the position, they forget what is said in the past. Right now, you are seeking the position of president. What are the strategies you from others so that we know you are a real activist and gonna do what you promise to come and get your position?
The last. Oh, how many questions?
And the last question is this. In terms of health and education sector, what are your plans for health and education sector?
We did that, thank you. Oh, sorry.
Uh, listen.
My name is Ademola Ignesame. And my question goes to the next coming president. How are you going to deal with full-on health care and the people who are around insurgency in Nigeria?
Yes, that's the question, you have a topic. All right, we're going to see, the questions that you wrote, we'll just take one question. If you wrote three questions, just compress it to go one, so that you can get to the end. So after, we have people online asking questions by now, they are asking us. And the people that came later, that we want to also give a chance, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Obama, you're very sure. I'm actually, my name is Aditari, I was born in this country, it's like two years ago, still here. And I'm from the family, so actually I don't have a question like that, I just have this sort of advice. There is, there is a picture of yours going on online, and I just want to advise you, just please avoid that. This, this campaign is to protect the planet, it's not, it's not, we are, we really may be there. Somebody, a character, a clownish character like five, she should not be alone in this campaign. Please avoid that, because I saw.
What is the question?
I saw you online pushing who that is.
Okay, so let me help you, let me help you. No, no, you see, no, no, I, I, no, 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 I did ask a question. So the reason why I did to take the mic is because things that have been done. He did a video explaining that, so I'll advise you, yes, go online on your phone and then, so because he won't repeat it here, but I've taken your other questions and you do, you do understand.
You know, you know why I'm taking this, you know why I'm taking this, okay? There are some people online that we can only have while it's, while it's. So for everything they try to throw against me, we, we stick up to them, fight them. So I want, I don't want them to have a chance to add something to say, so that's why I'm just saying this, just avoid that. Fact is, you're not alone in this campaign.
I will start with the suggestion, thank you very much for the suggestion. If there's a video of me, you find several videos of me doing all kinds of things. By the shape and of my role model. The, what happened was I went on Twitter campaigning on the streets and this woman was carrying a wheelbarrow made of fruits. And she saw us and she became excited and collected our posters and was distributing them. And she forgot her wheelbarrow with us. When she came back, this whole thing about we are not lazy came up. She said, I'm not this, look at me, I am pushing wheelbarrow to survive instead of still, you know, doing prostitution. So, and she was, one who requested, I said, okay, I have helped you to distribute your posters. Please, you have to help me push my ways too, if you are going to be president, that I can trust. Because sometimes people just want to touch their leaders. They want to make them, you know, feel like, they want to feel like after you leave, after you leave that campaign, that they can hold on to something that is memorable about them. But the other thing is that I've also uploaded videos of me when I was in contest as far back as 2015. Also, I went to construction site and helped push, just to see how they feel. Because that's how I advocate for better governance, being in touch with reality. I've also been an accident since before and carried accident victims. Not because I want to contest for election, but that's also me. When I was at the University of Lagos, then we used to have a small problem, there would be traffic at Yavah and students wouldn't be able to get to school at that time. I would drive a student union bus down personally, to bring the students, especially on Sundays when they are returning home. That's my nature, that has nothing to do with fellowship. But I understand the cynical nature of politics that people expect a different standard. So I take your advice very seriously, thank you. This, when you are talking about activists, there are some names you should not mention. And the fellow you mentioned is name is, was never an activist. Yes, so when you talk about activists, talk about Mandela. Those are real activists, and they came to the government house and they did what activists do when the ovation of his loudest, they leave. See, if Oharu were to be an activist and a statesman, he would not be contested to be president of Nigeria at the age of eighty, eighty-something, because he's not seventy-five. That's another lie. We found out the other day that his younger sister just did eighty-two years birthday, Oharu is seventy-five. No, I'm not, I'm not making this up, it's true, it's the truth. Uh, so these activists you are talking about, they're not activists at all. Think about people like Obama, they were activists, you know, community organizers, they've been fighting for the rights of ordinary people. You can just look at my past, you know, you see my colleagues from UNLAD testifying to my very, very incredibly difficult life. I was a spell twice from the University of Lagos. I usually used to tell a story that I repeat it quickly. When I was a student union leader in nineteen ninety-two, Babangida was bribing anything that moves. Babangida. And they came to me and gave me, offered me a five-oh-five car. Anybody heard about Pijot five-oh-five? Yes. So to convince me that I was special status, they gave me the one they call GT. It's the one that has air conditioning and it has like a plastic at the back that makes it to have, the names that you will back call it, the five-oh-five, you know, the one that has this, and then the bit that is back here. And offered it to me, and I asked the guy, I says, how long can this one last? He said, no worry, in three years we'll get another. And I said, in three years, your Babangida would be history. And I, of course, drove him out of that encounter. Went back a few years later, after staying in America for about five years, and I asked my brother, where were you going to? I said, you see, it's the five-oh-five, you know, I said, what car is that? He says, Pijot five-oh-five. Our sixth luck was on our side, we saw one carrying a wheelbarrow. You know, it doesn't even have a roof anymore. Those cars don't exist anymore, so you can imagine if I mortgaged my integrity for a five-oh-five in nineteen ninety-two, where would I be today? I would, I would definitely be able to move a wheelbarrow around in my car.